Let me start out by thanking the staff here at the school. Principal Howard Tiedemann and Vice Principal Mrs. Rive Ducci, thank you for having us here tonight. It's a pleasure to be here at School 26 and I want to thank you and congratulate you and your staff for the excellent work that they're doing here at School 26. And I also congratulate Mrs. Joe on that remarkable presentation and performance they had out here in the courtyard yesterday. It was really wonderful. Tomorrow, we will also be visiting the school early in the morning to film their next show that will be here sometime next month that will be showcasing School 26 and the outstanding work that they're doing here. So once again, thank you all for being here tonight, to all the parents and everyone that came out to the meeting tonight. We certainly appreciate that. We encourage more participation as we take this meeting throughout the city of Elizabeth to all the neighborhoods and to all the schools. Thank you for being here. Now we're going to formally open up the meeting.[69.59][69.59][applause] Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education and pursuant to New Jersey statutes and the rules adopted by the Board of Education, notice of this meeting was sent to the Whorlal community newspapers, the Star Ledger and Cable Vision of Elizabeth, Friday, April 12, 2013. In addition, this notice is posted on the bulletin board in the lobby of the 500 North Broad Street and pursuant to this act, a copy has been filed with the City Clerk of Elizabeth. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers on this April 18, 2013 meeting of the Elizabeth Board of Education. We are here to govern, provide management oversight, and make policy for the district. The superintendent manages the district. This is a meeting of the board in public, not a meeting of the public. This meeting is being recorded and will become part of the Elizabeth Board of Education permanent record. In order that the recording will adequately reflect the proceedings, please refrain from talking while others are speaking. I also ask that you silence the sound on your electronic devices since it is legally mandated that these proceedings be accurately recorded. I may have to ask for order periodically should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities. I am pleased that you have taken time out this evening to join us. Thank you for your interest in the Elizabeth Public Schools. There will be a public portion for citizens to address the board. Participants for the public portion must sign up one hour prior to the advertised start of the meeting so that they may have the opportunity to speak. The sign machine states the name, address, telephone number, and the reason that the person wants to comment, whether it is an agenda item or a general education comment. Ms. Dinni, please take the role. Atholus.
Here.
Castilla.
Here.
Denosa.
Here.
Gonzalez. Nazco. Padla.
Here.
Carrera. Trujillo. Montero.
Here.
I'm going to ask that you please rise to the invocation. You'll be the highly trusting man as a teacher here at the Orlando Dr. Academy, School 26.
Whatever we've brought ahead to a moment prayer. We've come together tonight to make decisions for the children of this community. May the best skills and judgment be used in any and all planning. We pray that those making the decisions will be guided by wisdom, understanding, and respect for all. We are seeking blessings upon each form, mother, educator, parent, and guardian as we continue to instill the values we continue to educate and nurture these children so that they will be able to become successful and productive citizens. Please give us open minds and guide us and allow us to be positive role models for each and every child that is watching us every day. We pray that their lives will be blessed by our love, by our actions, and our attention. Amen.
I'm going to ask that we all bow our heads for a minute of silence in remembrance of one of our students' moms who passed away tragically in a devastating fire during the city of Elizabeth about a week ago. And also for all the victims and their families and the loved ones of that senseless tragedy and blessing on those bow our heads. Thank you. Now we're going to have the presentation of colors presented by the Admiral William F. Oldsey, Junior Leadership Academy, Junior ROTC.
Come on, march in, march, carry, come on. Forward, march. Come on, reverse, march. Come on, come on, ready, go.
We now have the pledge of allegiance presented by Joyce Almeida, a ethically student here at the school.
Thank you, gentlemen, and to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, a new God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Joyce. Now presenting the Star Spangled Banner will be two faculty members here from School Number 26, Ralph Marciano and Kevin Dinni.
Oh, we glad to see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleams whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight For the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaked And the rocket's red glare, the balm-tursting air gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, they are that star-spangled banner yet white o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave.[508.12][508.12][applause]
Come on, come on, all right, march. March, yes. march.
Presenting our pledge of ethics will be our student from eighth grade, Kaila M. Barron.
As a member of the Elizabeth Public Schools, Professor and community, I will treat people as I wish to be treated. And through that, I pledge to understand that the school community is a special place. Listen respectfully when someone else is speaking by paying close attention and not interrupting. Speak in a calm voice and use proper language. Dress appropriately for teaching and learning. Inspire the best in myself and others by celebrating successes and learning from mistakes. Care about others by demonstrating acts of kindness. Be a lifelong learner by taking every opportunity to learn from others.
One more minute. I'm going to present the core beliefs video.
We believe all students can learn and achieve their high levels.
We will ensure that all students graduating prepare to pursue meaningful secondary education.
We believe that teachers make a positive difference to the achievement.
We believe we promote, maintain, and celebrate those who practice teaching.
We believe that effective leaders produce excellent results.
We will improve, develop, and train and reward well-trained leaders.
We believe that a high performance team produces a legacy that enduring remains.
We will build a high-performance team that achieves excellence.
Okay, right now, we're going to have the nice performances for School 26. I hope everybody enjoys what's being presented to the public and to our community. The first one will be "Can Can or Fuzz" by Jack Polkemack. "Bostah Azul" by Bert De Jonge, performed by the Orlando Dr. Academy Orchestra. Miss Haplima, round of applause.[731.56][731.56][applause] Isn't that amazing? Take on graders. For someone, they probably will be their third language. So any child could learn, okay? And they could learn anything, any language. So congratulations and thank you very much for this performance. Now, we have a different... we have... we changed gears now. Now we have a poetry tale from the musical Hum, the Orlando Dr. Theater Group. I hope you enjoy it.[1779.68][1779.68][applause]
In our edge behind farmhouse Where the pace of life is slow There's a website where the just few words are used We spend days away on Saturday Shred on the water Away that keeps your kids on their hands In our land of green and pleasant Where your bands of duck and pheasant Every anthem will be walking arm and arm For our life is good and steady Till we're flat And all been ready It's a poetry tale A fox down on the pond There's a turkey with a gobble Watch its legs begin to wobble Plus that's given it a cause for some alone Got a blue and twin, got chicken twin Got pills and what begins It's a poetry tale A fox down on the pond What horse is vision misses It's high up she's my misses So please be a fine land on the spar She goes in for heat and whacking To point out the skills I'm lacking It's a poetry tale A fox down on the pond Come on down and don't be strangers Here I'm duck, I love you Rangers Poetry tale A fox down on the pond
Water, water, water The chase I'm always caught When the cat learned to do the previous song He knows he's so smelly Then he's willing to play
It's a poetry tale A fox down on the pond
How they learn themselves I never show my interest in this one I admit I'm quite glad But it's rather poor of myself What I need to make up for it to lose to But swam Help me catch That's a river Catch That's a fish and I trust Yeah That's a fish and I feel like Make me feel like Those everything are juicy Oh, it's a blood Again, again, again!
In our water park There's a fish on the pond and on the tractor And the Mandarin glory and so char To find every person there It's a poetry tale A fox down on the pond Come on down and don't be strangers Here I'm duck, I love you Rangers It's a poetry tale It's a poetry tale It's a poetry tale A fox down on the pond
Did you hear those voices? Well, when you become from Elizabetha Now, we have a last performance. And this song really gets to me because he's from Puerto... He was from Puerto Rico. And my son had the opportunity to play this song many years ago. He won a contest by the Hispanic Showcase That airs in New Jersey Network. And he was also a product of Elizabeth Public Schools. Now we have the Cantaloupe Island by Herbie Hancock. Oye como va by Tito Puente. Ooh, who's by Miles Davis. Performed by the Orlando Drayna Academy guest on the sample. Enjoy it.
Our next selection is Cantaloupe Island by Herbie Hancock. On the trumpet, David Santino. And on the trumpet is... Sandra Ricks. You really want me to talk? Don't get me started. Our last number is... Oye como va by Tito Puente. This features again on the trumpet Brandon Repper And again on the alto sax Dante Hall. Hope you enjoy it.
Okay, Tito Puente goes to his mother somewhere after he died a few years ago. So let's hear a round of applause for all the performers, all of them, from 26.
Thank you all once again. That was just great. I want to thank you all for being here. We're gonna do some quick presentations now. For us, I mean, all the board members that come up here behind me. This is really, for us, the most important part of tonight. To recognize some of the young scholars here in the school. To recognize some of the wonderful staff that you have working here at the Orlando Drera Academy and also in our community. Right now, I would also, before we do that though, I'd like to call up our principal, Howard Catalon, just to come up and say a few words to you right now.
Thank you, President Montero. I'd like to, on behalf of the faculty and staff of Dr. Orlando Drera Academy, welcome the Elizabeth Board of Education, Superintendent Munoz, Central Office of Administration, colleagues and guests who are building. Uh, I wanna thank everybody for honoring us with the Board of Education having their meeting here. We're hoping that everybody gets a chance, or has had a chance now, to learn a little bit more about us, our program here and to see how our students can do well in the academics and in the arts and get a chance to see how our students are talented in many different ways. Uh, this is all part of the International Baccalaureate Initiative that began here a couple of years ago. We were recently accepted as a candidate school for the International Baccalaureate for the primary year program, which is our elementary program, as well as in the middle school years, which is the MYB, your middle year program. Uh, at this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Dave Resick to come up. And he's just gonna briefly talk to you a little bit about what the International Baccalaureate is and how it's impacting teaching and learning here at Dr. Orlando Drera Academy.
Thank you, Mr. Catalon. Uh, the International Baccalaureate for the Ivy is an educational program to help develop student intellectual, personal, emotional, and social skills to learn, live, and work in a rapidly globalizing world. The goal of this program is to bring about a more peaceful, healthy, and productive world. The Ivy's rigorous framework for education is respectful of national and cultural sensitivities while developing what the Ivy calls the international learner, or one who follows the Ivy student learner profile. The student learner profile is about students that are enquirers, knowledgeable, thinkers, communicators, principled, open-minded, caring, risk-takers, balanced, and reflective. Ivy is much more than an educational program and certificate. At heart, Ivy participants are motivated by a mission to create a better world through thorough education. In their mission statement, Ivy states that "We promote intercultural understanding and respect, not as an alternative to a sense of cultural and national identity, but as an essential part of 21st century life." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Principal, Mr. Catalon. Thank you both for being up here and for the excellent work you're doing here at School 26. Now to present the recognition of student government for their work here in the school and out in the community is one of our outstanding, uh, new board members, Mr. Anthony Palo, who's gonna present the Student Excellence Award.
Good evening, everybody. On behalf of the Board of Education, I would now like to recognize some of the outstanding students, team members, and parents who contribute to the culture of excellence at Dr. Orlando Drera Academy, School Number 26. At School Number 26, there is a group of students in grades six to eight who meet regularly to develop ideas to improve school culture. These students take on leadership roles in school events, are active in school fundraising activities, and contribute time and effort in the greater community through various groups and projects. The Board of Education is proud to recognize the student government at School 26 for their dedication to supporting Dr. Orlando, Orlando Drera Academy and their community. To receive the award on behalf of the student government are Student Government, Student Government President George Sedano. And Student Government Vice President Kayla Hernandez.
Congratulations. Now presenting our Stars of Excellence and outstanding staff here at School 26 will be our board member, Mr. Carlos Trujillo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. Before I present this, uh, Mr. President, if you'll allow me, I would like to, uh, recognize the, uh, the teachers and the staff here, uh, at School 26, who've been doing an excellent job. I could tell while the children were up here performing, you could see on their face the, the, the level of commitment and care. It really comes across. They really care about our children. You could see they look at these kids like they're own and they, you, you could see the love for them. And that is so important. I'd like to thank you because it is so important for me as a parent to know that within our district, there, there are people like you who really care about our children. I know education, it is... Thank you, thank you for being teachers, for choosing the, the profession and doing it with such passion. It, it really shows, it comes out in, in, in everything you do and we really appreciate it. I sincerely appreciate it. I don't want to thank you, okay?
Stars of Excellence. At this time, we would like to honor several of the talented and dedicated team members at Dr. Orlando Drera School Number 26. The team members at Dr. Orlando Drera Academy work hard to develop students who demonstrate excellence in academics, athletics, and the arts. To do this, students must recognize that all parts of the education are important. It is through the dedication of team members at School 26 that students are able to fully realize their abilities and deepen their knowledge in all areas of learning. For their diligent and consistent efforts to advance the school's culture, to support meaningful holistic instruction, we would like to recognize and congratulate the following outstanding team members. Physical education, Mrs. Lori Arden. Mr. Rocco Passa. Art education, Mrs. Alisa Brenner. Mrs. Sula Campbell. Music education, Mrs. Christine Murphy, Mr. Stone Cretin. And Dr. Torres. Steven Newer. Apparently, everybody else knows it the same, to me. I apologize, guys. Great job. Again, a round of applause for our educators who did an excellent job for our children and all the passion and effort they put in. Second page. There's more people. Wait. Wait. Next to Miller, that's right, yes. Library, Mrs. Rayburn. Technology education, Mr. Ruffin. Power complete.
The reason we are now the number one urban school district in the standards, let's give them a round of applause for the hard work. Thank you. Now to present our Dr. Orlando Drera Academy Community Excellence Award is our school board member, Charlene Bass.
President, it gives me great honor to give this award out. I love the community that I serve and I love, I see a lot of community members here from different organizations, so I want to say welcome to everyone. Um, the next presentation is for the community excellence. We understand that the school is a community of learners that exists within a larger community. We respect that connection and encourage relationships between parents, team members, students, and community members. The next award is presented to the, to Michelle Odenowski for her tireless efforts in support of the school as the president of the PTA for the past two years, as president, as a parent representative of the school's safety team, as a member of the School 26 parent and teacher cohort, and by contributing many hours of her time to various school fundraisers. Please join us as we recognize Michelle Odenowski, PTO president. And to his classmate.
Again, our last presentation of the evening are to two outstanding community leaders and really dear friends of the Elizabeth Public School System. Um, we have with us here tonight Jim Coyle from the Gateway Regional Chamber of Commerce as president, and Mrs. Bernadette French, the chairman of the Board of Directors of the Gateway Chamber of Commerce and the senior vice president in clinical operations at Tenacost Regional Hospital. So we'd like to recognize the, both of you for how we have fostered a positive relationship between the business leaders of the city of Elizabeth and our Elizabeth Public Schools. These two leaders have contributed their time, their talents, and have elicited the support of many local business leaders to support the good work that's being done here at the Elizabeth Public Schools. One initiative that these two leaders, along with several sponsors, have contributed their time and effort to, now in its sixth year, is the Healthy Leap Expo. Thank you both for doing that. This event is held annually for the students of our six high schools. Elizabeth Public Schools Healthy Leap, which presents workshops, contests, and healthy living exhibits to over 2,000 students, is considered by the United States Department of Health and Human Services to be the largest teen obesity program in the United States of America. Let's give them a round of applause. And on behalf of Elizabeth Board of Education, I would like to thank you both for your support of our school district and present you with these certificates of recognition of your longstanding partnership with our district. Thank you both. Now, on behalf of Elizabeth Board of Education, we'd like to thank you all for coming out this evening and participating. And we encourage you to do it more often. We do this every month and we take the show on the road. And we're really so proud of all the hard work that all the staff, the students, and the parents are doing here in making us become the number one urban school district in the state. But now, we're on our way to becoming the number one public school district in the United States of America. And just this past week, thank you. And just this past week, we received the wonderful news that the Washington Post ranked the Elizabeth High School the number one public high school in the state of Jersey. Let's give them a round of applause. Once again, good evening. Thank you for being here. Now, we're gonna go into a five-minute recess. Thank you.